Administrator, will you please take roll call?
Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Chief Miller.
Here.
Myself Natalie Johnson and Administrator.
Alright, perfect. So for today, we've, we only have one line on the agenda. It's your motion to approve the agenda.
One more second.
Very quick and easy. All favor approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Chief, it's up to you. We did the administrative stuff.
Alright, hopefully. So tonight I'm here to talk to you guys about city, city council about. That's okay. So sorry, I'm here tonight to talk to the city council and the citizens about what I've discovered in the four months being here. What I believe, where the fire department needs to go and what we need to do to achieve that. And so, as many of you know, I came in here on the first house meeting and talked about liability. And I was really here to talk about reducing liability of the citizens, the city council, and the firefighters, and particularly our firefighters, because they're the ones that probably pose the most risk out here doing the job that they do. So, what I've got today is just a presentation. I want to talk a little bit about the history of the fire department and like, where we, where it started, where we've come from to the present, and then kind of where we want to go to the future. So, in front of you, you've got a handout, many handouts, I'll talk about those tonight, but those are for you to follow along if you'd like to. Otherwise, you can follow along on the screen too. And so, starting out, two thousand six to twenty twenty-one, the department was operated as kind of a third station with the city of Ramsey. Prior to that, it sounds like from, from the history that I gathered from, from the individuals on the fire department, it was kind of a, before that, it was several cities covered the, the township at the time. So, so Ramsey, it was operated as a third station of Ramsey. When they built the new public works building is when they actually started to put equipment into the old public works building, which became the fire department. At that time, it didn't have an addition on it. It was just basically a big garage for the most part. And so, what we're finding in that station today is most of the equipment was purchased by the city and now then, but through Ramsey. So they kind of, Ramsey kind of looked at what they thought the department needed or the city needed and purchased that equipment. So, does that sound pretty historically accurate for those who have been here? So, okay, so just bring the, up to speed, the ones that happened. So, we're going to talk about opportunities that we have there in front of us. And we have the opportunity to reduce the liability. We have the, the opportunity to incrementally grow the fire department from where it is today, and we have the opportunity to meet the service demand. That's, that's kind of increasing as we go along. Right now, we had, we, I think it was two hundred and forty-nine calls last year. We are at twenty-five calls a month right now, twenty to twenty-five calls a month. If we stay on that pace, we're going to be closer to three hundred calls for, for the years. So those calls for service keep going up. And so we need to meet that, that challenge. Obviously, seventy-five percent of our calls are medical in nature, twenty-five percent are, are fire in nature. So, the riskiest calls that we go on are, are the fire calls. I think the calls that we make probably the biggest difference are the medical calls, because that impacts people's lives right then and there. So, so we'll talk about those. So, current liabilities. Current liabilities we have, these are bullet topics, we're going to these in depth further down in the slides, but personal protective equipment is a liability. Training standards and certification training is a liability for us. We don't have good personal protective equipment, we don't have good training, we have a liability that's, that's hanging over our head. We have non-compliant facilities, and we'll talk about that. And we have the urgent need to replace some apparatus. We'll talk about that too. So those are our current liabilities. Let's go into depth in those. So, compliant personal protective equipment. Wildland personal protective equipment. We fight a lot of grass fires in this community in the, in the spring and in the fall. And currently, we have firefighters that have some wildland firefighting equipment, turnout gear, if you will, for, for wildland, which is a little bit lighter in weight, but still flame retardant. And we have firefighters that don't have it. And putting firefighters out fighting a grass fire in, you know, June, July, August, in the heat, in full turnout gear that we use for structural firefighting is really detrimental to, to their health and their well-being. And so, we need to outfit our firefighters in really two different sets of, of, of response gear. And so, right now, we have some, but not everybody has it. So, fitted and up to date personal protective equipment. The turnout gear that we wear into structural firefighting has to be fitted to the firefighter if they're going to wear it on a, on a regular basis. We do have some that are in gear that isn't exactly fitted for them. It was spare or extra gear that we had that we kind of put them in for the time being until we could purchase gear for them or budget for that. But with that said, that's not, it's not detrimental to them, and it's very unsafe to have them into that type of gear for long term. You know, we have one firefighter who, who is in a set of turnout gear that's probably about a size and a half too big for that person, and that's not safe right now. So, we need to work on updating that. With that said, we need spare turnout gear for when we have a fire, because after we have a fire, because fire is full of carcinogens and things that, that are unhealthy for us, we need to launder that gear. And we have the facilities and the equipment to launder it. The problem is, is it takes about a day and a half to launder one set of turnout gear. So we can do, and the equipment we have today, we can launder about two sets a day, but it takes the time for us to launder it, tear it apart, dry it on the dryer, because it can't be dried in like a commercial dryer and like that has to be air dried, and then put it all back together so it's in service. In that time span, we're going to have a fire department that's out of service because we don't have gear that is laundered and put together. So, we need to start looking at how do we get at least spare sets that are closely fitting to the firefighters, but not, maybe not exactly fitted to them. They have a main set, and they should have at least a spare that they can change into for a temporary basis. And so we need to work on, what does that look like? So, that's our, that's our personal protective equipment liability.
Chief, how long is personal protective?
Ten years, or until it's destroyed. But maximum ten years, or if we have a, an incident. I can think of a great example of, of Northfield had a, had a butter plant fire, and all of their turnout gear got butter on it, and it was destroyed because they couldn't clean it. Because you couldn't get that out. If anyone's had butter on their pants before, it just doesn't come out. And so, if we had a fire in, in where we got into something like tar or some chemicals or whatever that destroyed that gear, we wouldn't be able to use it. So, but ten years max on that.
Yeah, if, say you buy a second set of gear for each firefighter, and that second set of gear is hardly used because they're using their primary set, and you use that as sort of a replacement set of gear five years in, does that still have just a ten-year lifespan from the date of manufacture or purchase, or would the lighter use at the beginning of that period extend the lifespan?
Great question. It's ten years max, doesn't matter when it was put into service or when we started using it. So, theoretically, what we would like to do is, is get to a point where, you know, every five years, we're buying turnout gear for people so that, you know, first five years, you're using the set, you get a new set, that, that old set turns into a set of backup gear, and then that goes ten years. And so you just kind of have this leapfrogging cycle. And that just takes planning and budgeting to do that.
What is the typical cost of turnout, like residential turnout gear, not like the wild?
The wildfire gear versus the structural turnout gear? Structural turnout gear right now, just for the coat and the pants, thirty-seven hundred dollars a set. If we add, you know, helmets, gloves, boots, we're closer to about forty-eight hundred dollars by the time we get done with that. Gloves. Gloves are ten years, helmets are ten years, our hoods are ten years, and our boots are ten years. Everything is ten years in a cycle.
And what out of that needs to be washed to control for carcinogens? Everything?
The, so yeah, pretty much everything, right? So the helmets, even though the helmets are, you know, they're, they're fiberglass and they're hard, we wipe them down, make sure that we get all the carcinogens off them. The liners that are in the helmets, those are cloth, they come out, we can wash those. The hoods get washed, the gloves get washed, pretty much everything, we wipe down the boots. So. And we have your hand up. Okay. Perfect. Alright. Alright, so, um, so, so that kind of, that, that kind of ends our liability, excuse me, the turnout gear. Moving on, we have certification and training requirements. So, certification and training requirements. ISO recommends, ISO is a serving, uh, insurance service organization that rates us for fire protection. This is what every citizen in the community has for a rating for their household insurance. Okay, so, we'll talk about ISO a little bit later, but ISO has recommendations for training. State Board of Fire Training Education has a requirement, so they're two different things, okay? So ISO is requiring a hundred and ninety-two hours per year of, of training per firefighter. I don't know many full-time fire departments that can reach a hundred and ninety-two hours a year. That's a lot, but I just wanted to put this up here to, so you understand. We need to be somewhere in between. So, state board says seventy-two hours of basic fire training every three years just to maintain your license and certification as a firefighter in the state of Minnesota. Currently, we're right around, our firefighters between our, our, our EMT training, medical training, and our fire training, we're right around that seventy hours a year, sixty to seventy hours a year. That's good, but I think we can do better, and I'll, I'll explain why we need to do better when we get down to ISO and ISO rating. The other, a huge liability we have right now is emergency vehicle operations certification, which is an EVOC course. It's a course that's run by the state of Minnesota. Even though firefighters in the state are exempt from licensure requirements as far as what class they have to have to drive vehicles, we still put firefighters who are driving Toyotas and Hondas into really big fire equipment with some training and education behind that, but we don't do a certification course form necessarily that I have found here. And so, what I see is, is having every one of our firefighters at least have the initial EVOC certification course, which is a course that the state teaches and is taught up at St. Cloud on a, on a pad and a track that allows us to drive big vehicles and smaller vehicles in dangerous situations and teaches our firefighters how to control them. Right? So at the end of that course, we get the certification. And why is that so important to us? One, we want to train our firefighters to, to be able to handle these vehicles in emergency situations. We also, if and when we get into an accident, the first thing that's going to come, come back to this, the city and the fire department is, what training have you, have your operators had in emergency vehicle training or vehicle operation, I'm sorry? And I want to, you know, we want to be able to, to pull out the certifications, here's the certifications, here's our manual training plan, here's what we do. So, hopefully, our firefighters are doing everything correct. And that takes the blame, the liability off of the, the city, the department, and the firefighters. So, yes. It does.
And then whatever other changes you might have, whether it be water training or.
Right.
Is it typical? For the emergency vehicle operations certificate, what is typical or who is driving the truck?
Is there some sort of? You, you have what requirements as far as you, in order to drive, you'd have to have been on the department for so many years, or?
It's not a year requirement for us currently. It's, it's, it's basically skill demonstration. So we take people out, we drive with them, we have them demonstrate the skills, and run them through a a technical, we call it a cone course, but it's a technical course for driving and maneuvering. And so, once they kind of pass that initial driving, and they've driven with so many hours with, with experienced drivers, then we start to release some of the drive. Now, unfortunately, because we are a paid-on-call fire department, it's whoever shows up and whoever's got the qualifications has to jump in the truck and drive.
Yeah, I, I just know that some other volunteer departments literally go, yep, you're on the department, but you're going to have to wait for somebody to, to, to take the rig out because you haven't been here long enough.
Yeah, we do have, we do have several individuals right now that aren't cleared for driving, that even though they show up, we got to wait for somebody else that can actually drive the truck before we put it on the road. Yep. So. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, if this might be something where we, we wouldn't necessarily have to have every, every, everyone on the department take that training immediately, or if it might be something that we could phase in over time.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not proposing that we, we go out and do the, the training immediately, but I think that with the numbers that we have on the, the department currently, that this is something attainable within, within six, eight months of, of operation. So, it's not something that has to be done right away. The nice thing about EVOC classes, it's eight hours. We usually can get it done on a Saturday, so it's fairly easy to do and schedule. So.
But it's not mandatory that it has to be done now, so it could.
Nothing is, absolutely nothing is mandatory. It's just how much risk and liability do you want to, do you want to take on? Yeah, absolutely. So. Okay, that answer your question? Alright. So, certified credential, credential that education to grow future leaders. So right now, what we have is, is we have a very young fire department, very inexperienced. We need to start educating our firefighters. We need to give them opportunities to take leadership courses to grow that, to grow our future leaders for in this department. We need to onboard more firefighters and, and continue that kind of, of pipeline of, of individuals. And so, so without having credentialed leaders, people that have fire officer one, fire officer two, fire instructor one, fire instructor two, investigations, inspections, and things like these, these, this coursework that builds the knowledge base for them to then use their skills to better this, the city and the department. It's, you know, it, it's, we're just doing our firefighters in, in the community, really a disservice by not providing education opportunities for people that are willing and want to do it. So, and it just hasn't been provided in the past. So.
Chief, are you going to talk more about them courses, what that means? Like you said, there's some leadership courses. Are you going to talk more about it somewhere later in the PowerPoint?
No, but I can, I definitely answer questions about that, so.
Give me an example of one or two. What are these leadership courses? At what point do they attend them?
Yeah, so.
Any idea the cost on them?
Yeah, so generally, generally like a, a fire officer one course, which is kind of a basic leadership course, which gives you knowledge and skills to start dealing with personnel issues, being a captain on the rig, making, you know, making decisions on the fire ground that are for the crew and the company involved with. That's usually about a three-month course, relatively about twelve hundred dollars to send someone to that, plus their, their time spent there. And they come out of that with a certification from the state of Minnesota, being a fire officer one. So, fire officer two graduates to a little bit more than a captain under an assistant chief level, but now you're starting to deal more with personnel issues, payroll issues, dealing with difficult people, things like that, where we're giving people some leadership skills and abilities so that, so that, you know, we have news within the, the fire department. And usually, those are to, to start taking those courses, it's usually a three to five-year person is what you want for experience level. You know, we can send somebody that we just hired after they get through fire one, fire two, and hazmat ops because they're super excited to, to continue your education. But then they don't have the experience on the other end of being a firefighter to understand what it takes to actually do the job as a firefighter. So we really want to wait till that three to five-year piece on the department or, or their experience on the department before we start to send out those courses. We have some individuals who are ready for those courses, so we just don't have the, the funding to send them right now. So.
You don't want to be budgeted money is what you're saying.
Correct. Budget money. Yeah. So. That answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to equipment liabilities. We've got mandated radio encryption that's coming down from the county. And what this means is, is we basically have to buy some radios that are encrypted. We don't have radios that are able to be encrypted. And we don't need, every firefighter doesn't need to have this encryption. What is, what this means is, if we want to talk to law enforcement across our, our boundaries, we need to have encryption on our radios, because law enforcement's moving to encryption. Fire service isn't necessarily moving to encryption, but there are places where we cross over where we need that. And so, we're going to have to look at probably investing in some radio equipment that's going to allow at least our officer staff to have that communication with, with the sheriff's office. So, and that's just something that, that's coming down from Anoka County that, you know, we don't control. So. The other piece that, that I've come across in, in the four months I've been here is, we have a lot of commercial vehicle traffic in this community, more than what I thought we did. Being with the crane services here, the trucking companies that are in town, the, the, you know, kind of road twenty-two and all the different kind of roads that run through this community. So we have a lot of commercial vehicle traffic. The problem is, we don't have commercial vehicle extrication equipment. So if we do get in an accident with a large vehicle, we don't really have the equipment to lift those vehicles off of anything or create space to remove people from those vehicles. And so, we need to start looking at capabilities to, to do that. And so, that's again, these are liabilities that we have that now that we've, we've discovered them, we should probably start to plan for them. So.
Chief, what is, what does that look like?
It looks like a, that looks basically like a set of airbags to lift. Right now, we have no way to actually lift anything heavy, heavier than a, a, a personal vehicle or, or kind of normal passenger vehicle. And so, without that, we would have to call another department that may have that equipment, which are, you know, are mutually aid units can, can help us in an interim. But it's really something that we shouldn't have to wait for, because, you know, time is of the essence when it comes to, to those kinds of accidents.
Is the inflation device self-contained within the, with the bags, or is it?
It, it is. So everything is self-contained. We were actually running it off of our, our air tank bottles that we have for SCBAs. So, we power that with, with our compressor that we already have in the truck, in our SCBAs, and, and lifting capacity can be several tons. And so, so be able to, if we add that equipment, we'll be able to do that self-contained with our, our SCBs that we currently have.
Idea of cost?
The cost on those are, they're about twenty thousand dollars for a set. So, it's a, it's a, it's not a cheap expense by any means.
I'm just telling you when we're all done, you're going to roll this up and say, here's our liabilities, here's what I'm recommending, here's the cost, and here's the plan?
We're going to talk, yeah, we're going to, we're going to talk where we're going, where we want to go.
Alright.
Yeah, so absolutely.
Because I'm not taking notes on every individual cost.
And you should, and you should. We'll talk, we'll talk kind of where, where we go with next steps. Okay? But this equipment that we don't have, we should be looking at.
May I ask a question? Are those bags reusable after an accident?
Yeah, they, they have a, they have a fifteen-year lifespan on them. It's just piece of equipment that inflates to plates and plates to plates. It's not a one-time use. So. Alright, um, so let's talk rescue one a little bit. Why is a liability? A rescue truck has an engine that is, at best, on its last legs. They had talked about investing money. Can you tell me what rescue one is first of all? I'm sorry, yeah, absolutely. So rescue one is a truck that has no pump, has no, only has gear on it. We take it to medicals in car accidents, so it has some extrication equipment on it, has some medical equipment on it, and carries four fire. So it looks like a pickup truck front with a big box on the back, but no pump, no water. Okay, that help? That truck is, is, I believe it's a two thousand eight. We bought it used. We, as in the city of now then, Ramsey is the ones that actually purchased that truck or recommended to purchase that truck. So we bought it used from a department on the east coast like Pennsylvania. So, it was, it came to us well-used. And, and so, in the meantime, we've done some engine work on it, we've done some suspension work on this, so we've actually had to beef up the suspension because the suspension was sagging on it. And, and really, it's kind of upgrown its useful lifespan. And so, the, the vehicle actually is, it's, you know, what I'm telling our firefighters is, let's drive this carefully, because it has a lot of sway in it, because it's big and boxy. And, and, you know, get to the call safely, but, but let's not overdrive the vehicle. This year, we had to replace six tires on that vehicle because they had never been replaced since we had bought it. So, recommendation for that is, it's not worth putting money into. It's out of standard, it's life cycle. So we really need to talk about replacing it, and talk about what is the right piece of equipment to replace that with here. So. Any questions on the rescue vehicle? Just want to make sure I don't want to go up ahead. Everybody's favorite topic, emergency management, outdoor warning signs. So we have liability there. We have a, we had a study done in two thousand four. The study said we needed six outdoor warning signs for this community. Technology's changed a little bit. We could talk about what that means for us and future sides, but, but understand that the recommendation was for six warning signs. We currently have one. Okay? And then we have the operations center, emergency operations center, which is this building that we're standing in. It's a big building, and it can accommodate a lot of people, but infrastructure-wise, it doesn't have what it would take to actually operate a, any OC, or emergency operations center. The electrical in here wouldn't support enough computers to, to run everything. We don't really have any phone lines in here to really operate off of. Certainly, I don't think there's a landline in here at all. There is one, okay, so we have one. We have one landline in here. So. Yeah. Yeah. I don't even have a landline at my house, but I don't have any OC at my house either. So, but so, so if we, in the event of emergency where we had to stand up in the OC, we would probably have to have some communications help. It probably wouldn't come from Anoka County. We'd have to probably get it from either a state resource or another county that was not affected. Because if, you know, county's affected by, say, a tornado or something like that, that takes out several cities, they're not going to be able to help us with any OC.
The guard has a cover.
What's that?
Minnesota Army National Guard.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll definitely have to have outside resources for that. And so, again.
Phone calls for you. We covered it.
So, absolutely. So, so in the event that we, we, that did occur, we'd struggle standing up in the OC. And so, again, this is something for future planning that we need to look at.
Chief, is there other alternatives other than this building? About right at the fire station, you know, it's quite small for the OC, but could we use that other occult area where the prep area or the, the office area?
Right.
Does that have the requirements necessary?
It, it doesn't, unfortunately, because it's a fire station, we have to respond out of it. And so, in the event of an emergency, you don't want the OC at the fire station, because people are going to be coming and going. We'll have a lot of resources moving through that building. And it's, it wouldn't be a secure facility, and you wouldn't want the community to try and gather there. Because then they basically be on our way to trying to do our job. So definitely don't want that. The, you know, public works, city hall facility isn't really big enough to accommodate that either. And so, we're, we're going to struggle, you know. And so we're we're gonna struggle, you know. Yes.
Is it ever uh done that use like a local commercial building like bootleggers or something?
Or churches.
Or a church. Yeah, maybe that's a better. In a temporary, in in temporary, we probably could. Um, and again, it's, you know, when we look at. Planning for the future and what do we do until we get to to whatever that end gap is in the future. There are places that we could probably leverage for that. In the short term, right? So we're talking, you know, five, ten years that you could leverage that. Um, but when you start looking beyond, um, you you know, those those businesses change over, those churches may change over, they may not be there anymore. Um, so it it wouldn't be prudent planning to rely on something like that, but definitely. You know, in the interim, while you're trying to figure out where you need to go, what you need to build, what you wanna do, definitely we can leverage things like that. Yes.
Do you know? Do you know what other of the municipalities that are surrounding us have their own EOC? And it are are there EOCs, a separate standing, either structure? Or a room within a structure so it doesn't have to be set up in the case of an emergency?
Yeah, pretty much nobody has a a separate EOC ready, you know, like like everything is set up ready to go. What a lot of. Um, cities have, municipalities have is they've got a dedicated place, whether it be in city hall or. Um, some have like larger fire stations where they can break off. Um, like I just take city Maple Grove cuz I know that one. They have a in their basement in city hall, they have an EOC. Down there, that's actually a multi-purpose room, but um in a moment's notice, they can open up. Um, some closet doors, wheel out their computers, set everything up and 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 actually have a a functional EOC probably in about thirty minutes. Um, and then there's others who just, you know, have a a space that might be, say, the council chambers or things like that, that they're like, okay. In a in urgency, we're gonna dedicate the council chambers to an EOC, and we're gonna have the equipment there. So it's it's really vast. Um, the only city I know of, um, on this side of the river. Is Minneapolis that has their own EOC set up at a separate location from any other city building. Um, and that one's operated almost twenty-four seven. So.
Thank you.
You're definitely not gonna get to that. All right. Facilities. So facilities, fire station. Talk about the liabilities that we have in the fire station. It's it's uh inadequate. All right, we'll talk while we'll talk facilities.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we may have a different topic. So, um. So fire station, um inadequate facilities in space doesn't meet safety standards. For separation from equipment, meeting space, office and apparatus. Um, the current station, it's not weather resistant. It's susceptible to windstorms, tornadoes, heavy snow. Um, if we lose that uh fire station, we lose all our ability to respond. Um, there is no storm shelter in it and there's no extended deployment options. So. Um, if I need to bring personnel in for a snowstorm or a weather event or something like that, and I need to stop that station for a period of time. Um, I have no kitchen. Um, I can't cook them food. Um, I have no place to to sleep anybody. Um, if we needed to do that, and I don't even have places for people to sit down and in comfortable furniture. Other than plastic chairs for the meeting room. And so it's uh woefully inadequate to do that. Um, and really what's even more important than that is is there's no exhaust system for the for the exhaust for the trucks for the station. The separation between the turnout gear and the the trucks is is inadequate because there's. There's no ventilation for that and it's separated by a kind of like a plastic um curtain type of thing. Um, and so. Uh, we really need to have a facility that separates these different components out because again. Again, we have uh, you know, we have turnout gear with curd sinogens and things like that, even though we're gonna wash them, it's still. Uh, mixed in with the office area close to the to the meeting room. Um, and things like that. And so again, it was a it was a station that was built to try to accommodate what we could at the time. Um, but again, it's one of those that's kind of uh outlasts its useful life. And so we should look at. Uh, we need to start planning for what does that look like in the future down the road. So. Um, questions on the stations?
So that this is a forgive me, this is a a pretty drastic change from the conversation. The the two of us had earlier in the year when you know, uh. Staff made arrangements for doing meet and greet and ask questions about the the fire department. So.
Based. What change?
Yeah.
What changes is uh I'm four months into this, I've been able to really investigate. What we have. When 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 we first met, um, I think I did a meet and greet or tried to meet and greet with most of the council. That February timeframe, January, February. Um, didn't really allow me a lot of time to really dig into what we had. Um, now that I've had an opportunity to really dig into our our. Um, our equipment, our stations, kind of where we're at. Um, we're finding, you know. Deficiencies in in that. Um, face value, you look at that that station, you walk there, you're like, well, it's it's clean, it's nice, it's organized. Golden Fitz, turn up yours in a nice spot. Um, but then when you start looking at everything as a whole, you start to find out, well. That's not safe. That, you know, we have no facilities to cook. We have no facilities to sleep in a weather event. All of a sudden, um, you know, these things start to to um pop up and you start to to get a bigger picture, clearer picture of what. Um, of what we have. So.
But we have in the past had conversations about the deficiencies in that building. Um, so it it it's not brand new to was to say Dan and I, that we've had those conversations. Um, there is changes within OSHA that are gonna mandate things that we can't do over there. And and Chief, um, Dave Schmidt from Saint Francis had advised us of some of that. In the last couple of years.
Right. Yeah, so I I I'm sure this probably isn't a new conversation for people, you know, who've been on the coast for a while. And and have seen, you know, and I I trust that Chief Schmidt probably brought these. Um, you know, and then and then we have the the, you know, the the water supply that's at that station with. You know, for those who don't know the history of the well and the station and all that. We do fill our our um our fire trucks off of a two-inch well. Um, it literally is like a garden hose. Um, I I went over there tonight and, you know, cuz I'm like, how much does this thing actually put out? It's about ten to fifteen gallons a minute. And when you're filling a thousand gallon tanker, it's about an hour or so to fill that even off of. Of a two-inch hose that we can run off of that well. So it's a pretty inadequate water supply. Um, it's good for the station. We can take showers if we need to. We can, you know, drink the water, flush the toilets, things like that. But filling trucks with that. Takes a while, definitely. So. All right. Any other questions on the station? Okay, let's get to the good stuff. That's a lot to take in. Um, we're starting to talk about some some solutions. So first thing I wanna talk about is ISO and where we are with. Um, our rating. So our rating is where ISO puts us on the list. You look at the the slide in front of you or up on the screen, you'll see ten being zero to to. Nine point nine nine points, one being ninety or more, ninety to a hundred, basically. You want the top, you want the top ring, you want one for an ISO rating. Um, ten being, you know, you have fire department. And so if you wanna think about who has a class one rating uh across America, LA city. You know, if you wanna think about that. So a lot of firefighters, a lot of fire stations, a lot of water. Um, that really, um. You know, dictates a lot of training, things like that. Are we ever gonna get to one? Absolutely not. Um, we wanna be somewhere in between. So why I put this up is we need to talk about divergence. And divergence is the score that we. Can control kind of, but we wanna, while we can control for sure, but we wanna be able to control it better. So divergence is. If I have no water and a lot of firefighters, I'm gonna have a divergence score in between. If I have a lot of water and no firefighters, I'm gonna have a divergence score. And so what I want is I want some water and I want some firefighters. So that I can minimize that divergence score um in the ISO because that's something that that um. Every department kind of gets knocked for in in every ISO rating. So we wanna try and control that divergence. And we'll talk about how to do that. Okay? So provisional rating right now for ISO for this community, we're seven out of ten. Um, which isn't bad. Um, I thought we're gonna be worse. Um, provisional maintenance doesn't come off till May um officially, but this is kind of where we're at. So this is factors that they're still factoring in. It could go greater rather than not less, right? Um, and so where we can make up some points and and you see our divergence score of three point two one. Right? Right off the top, we're gonna lose three, three point two one points because. You see the verge of sport down to the bottom there, divergence community risk reduction or uh divergence score minus three point two one.
Check.
Okay. Um, so that's that's that water supply firefighter thing that we wanna try and control. Okay? So we're losing three points right off the the top because of divergence. So. Um, other places we're losing training. Um, if you look at credit for training, we have. One and a half, one point five seven points out of nine points for training. So we need to do a better job of training to to increase that. Um, that score. Um, things like pump capacity. Is gonna be a huge issue and reserve pumping, right? So I know that we have a tanker um with a pump that's coming. Um, for ISO ratings, it's either a pump or it's a tanker. It's not both. So even though we have a pump on it. It really only counts for water supplier or tanker at that at that point. Um, but we do need to pump on it to operate. Um, and so we so we have some water supply coming that'll help us. Um, that is coming the end of May. I just confirmed again. I got actually have pictures. Um, that they sent me today. So we we have a chassis. We have a backend that's starting to take shape. So that's awesome. Um, and so when we look at, um, we have no reserve pumping capacity. Um, because we only have the one fire engine. So engine fifty that has a a fire rated pump on it's twelve hundred fifty gallons a minute. That's what counts for us for pumping capacity. Um, so we have no reserve capacity. Um, as far as uh other things that we control, um, water supply is the big one. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about water supply. Um, there's I gave you guys a, there's a map that I passed out of the city. So you'll see that instead. Okay, perfect. So we have a the one, the one dry hydrant we have down East Twin Lakes. So there's a dry hydrant down East Twin Lakes. Um, that one we got credit for for ISO. Um, that's the only credit we got for water supply under ISO cuz we don't have a well. We don't have any other way to fill our own trucks. We do, we can go to other cities. We need to make agreements with them. Right now, in an emergency, they'll allow us, but we probably really need to make a formal agreement that says we can go fill off of their hydrant system. But even at that, most of those hydrants are a half a mile to a mile outside of our borders. So. Uh, fire in center of town, we gotta run to the end of town plus to get water. So. In the interim, um, until we can really have a discussion about a well, um, my plan is to look at. Two more water sources in this community. So Pico Lake has a full watch that we could put a a dry hydrant in. Um, dry hydrants are are around ten thousand dollars to put in, um, give or take. Um, which is not a lot of money to invest into a water supply to get us points towards our ISO and give us a stable. Um, water supply that we can use in an emergency, um, twelve months out of the year. So.
Took them using the window also.
Yeah, so dry hydrants get buried in the ground, go out into the lake. Um, and then they're held below the frost line. So then we can draft out of the lake, out of that. So we don't have to go up and throw hoses in the lake. We actually go to this pipe that's sticking out of the ground with our fittings on it. We can draw from there. So.
Um, how many points would you estimate that would move just putting in one dry hydrant?
I'd have to, honestly, I'd have to talk to ISO about that cuz it really depends on what we can rate that at. So if it's rated at, you know, if we can rate that at, um, you know, twenty-five hundred gallons a minute drafting. Um, we probably get five, eight points just out of that water supply.
Which category would that be under for water supply?
So it just goes under flow and flow testing.
Oh, really?
So. Along with credits for hydrants. So. Um, so we could gain a lot of points by investment in some water. Um, the other water supply that that I have discovered um is Barnum. Barnum has hydrants. They have a well. We would have to negotiate uh an opportunity for us to use that supply. Um, and that sits in our community. So. Um, I didn't realize that they they had that water supply up there, but they actually have three fire hydrants on their property. Um, and talking to them, speaking with the maintenance personnel, um, it is a fairly high capacity well cuz it actually supports our sprinkler system and it's made for fire protection. So if we have an opportunity to use that site as a water source for ISO rating, that will help us increase that. That also.
How much water needs to be available as a source in order for it to affect the ISO rating?
Usually around that, I'm sorry, usually around that, um, thousand to two thousand gallons a minute because you gotta be able to fill the tankers. That's the thing. And tankers are are right around a thousand to twenty-five hundred gallons. So you wanna fill them quickly. So when they when they get to the water supply, you fill them quickly. They take off to the fire, they dump their supply, they come back. And so you have kind of a chain. Of of a big bucket brigade on wheels, if you will, um, filling or delivering water to the fire in tanks that they dump on their on. Um, what we call them static tanks on the ground. So they look like these big swimming pools. So we draft out of those um to fight the fire.
Well, and the reason I was asking, so I was literally thinking about swimming pools. I'm just thinking about my swimming pool at home. It has a pump system and it it pumps pretty fast. I mean, you just. You open it up and start pushing out a ton of water. Are there?
It's not a thousand gallons a minute.
Probably not.
I know that.
Yeah.
Um, and that's that's the difference is being able to fill quickly. Granted, we have a well at our fire station, but it takes us an hour to fill a tank. You know, a thousand gallons of water in a tank takes us an hour. That's too slow. So we need to be able to turn water around in in five to ten minutes, not, you know, thirty to thirty minutes to an hour.
Is it ever an option to not like put in a water tower? But just get a big plastic tank that holds water and elevate it so that gravity falls in quickly?
We live in Minnesota.
That was a dumb idea.
No, 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 absolutely not. I mean, because that is, you'd have to insulate it, you have to heat it, you have to do something for it. Now, that doesn't say that that. As you can't cistern water, which means put it in a tank in the ground, have a wall that fills that cistern. Slower slower than what you can extract from. So it's, you know, maybe it's ten or twenty thousand gallons in the ground. That's safe from freezing. We put a high-capacity pump on that instead of a high-capacity well. We can draw for the tank, the tank can fill slowly over time. To refill it. So there are options out there.
Yes. Chief, we also have in town more well, and I know that staff has used it for help helping flood the rink. What do they, do you know what they have available to be?
I don't. I mean, they I they may have tanks um or something like that, but I don't.
They have well. Them well, I but I don't know the.
I I honestly don't know of any other well around that would have that kind of capacity outside of like farm wells, things like that. Um, cuz I know there was um at one time. Um, one of the farmers on twenty-two uh wanted to allow us to to tap into the well, um, which, you know, great for the farmer, but. Um, you know, part of that is it's on twenty-two. It's a really hard place to to turn around and fill trucks on, especially in the winter time. Um, the other piece to that is is, you know, what happens when either that well breaks down or. The farmer decides he doesn't wanna let us use it anymore. You know, that's that's a that's an issue. So we really wanna try and get to our own water sources, whether that be, you know, static water sources like the lakes. Um, you know, having to agree with Barnum on a temporary basis to use them until we can figure out. You know, what we, you know, what we can do for a greater water supply, things like that.
And I I just, I only mentioned work well cuz I I don't know what their capacity is, but it would be. I think a conversation with them and on a temporary business, work well has always been very um gracious to the city.
Sure.
In the work that they've done for us.
Yeah.
And um if they could help us, I would have, I can't speak for them, but I would assume that they would.
Yeah, we can definitely have a conversation, see what more resources they have for us that they could help sell with.
Thank you.
So. Right. The well has, the well is not a new discussion. It's been talked about quite often. I mean, that has been one of the options was that the challenge we have around here is there.
That has been one of the options was that the challenge we have around here is there, there's actually issues about how much water we can get out. So that's why one option that was proposed was to literally drill like five wells and have them all get stored in a tank. You know, but that obviously is. Much more expensive than just one well.
So these are things that we need to explore, so options, all those options.
Chief.
Yes.
I have a question on the dry wells. Can you explain how all the weeds and stuff don't go through when they're pulling it and how do you get the water enough to?
Yeah, so we try, they try and run the pipes beyond the, where the weeds are at, so when the weeds commonly grow, they try and get the pipes farther out. From there, um, on a very kind of low plane. Um, and then we use strainers at the ends of them, and so, um, yeah, there's a maintenance issue for those, we have to go out and clean the strainers, we have to have somebody do that. Um, our firefighters jokingly said, well, would this have an old county dive team go out there and practice? Uh, which probably makes sense, but, um, but uh, we definitely, it's a main, it becomes a maintenance issue. Back flushing those and things like that, it's something that, you know, our maintenance department would probably have to go out and maintenance in the. Before winter where they, and if we use them, or they actually, um, reverse pressurize them, um, to keep the water down below the frost line. So, yeah, there's maintenance with them, um, but it's, you know, dry, or uh, sorry. Um, dry hydrants, uh, are not two hundred thousand dollars either, so.
It's one of the lowest cost options that you've talked about, so.
It is, absolutely, so. All right, thank you. Um, so what we wanna do with the ISO level is, we wanna, we wanna get better, and I know we can get better because. Um, ISO came in in November of of last year and did our rating. Um, I don't think the department was very prepared for it at the time, and I think, um, we can, um, request a, uh, uh. For them to come and re-rate us, um, once we kind of have all of our, um, our, all of our records. Um, up and and, uh, in order, so, and I think we can do much better than what we, where currently have, so.
Chief, chief. I, I just, what was our current rating? The.
I don't, I don't know the current rating, um, this is the rating that we're gonna get in, in, um, in.
Okay.
Do you know if it's up or down?
I'm assuming it's probably up, I mean, meaning that it's, it's better than what it was. Um, because I don't know how they were raining before because we had Ramsey covering, we had Saint Francis covering, so how did they rate that as an apartment? I'm not sure. So.
Thank you.
What is, and you might be getting to this, but what's, what's a reasonable goal for us to achieve for an ISO score?
I think we can get to, I, I honestly think we can get to a low six, high five, I, I really do, I think with, with. With, um, some moderate investment in the fire department, um, whether it be equipment, training and water supply. Um, I think we can get to, to a better ISO rating. Um, and that's a great question, cuz my next slide talks about what is that gonna save us, um, so. So, example of improved saving in in ISO, just going from, take the, the three hundred thousand dollar home. Going from the seven that we're currently are at, from, um, one thousand three hundred fifty nine to a six, that. One thousand two hundred sixty two, um, some quick math in there is what, about a hundred and. Forty dollars, fifty dollars, somewhere in there, right?
So from thirteen ninety, fifty nine to twelve sixty two?
Yeah. It's about a hundred bucks.
A little bit less.
Yeah, a little bit less than a hundred. Going down to five, we're at another about, uh, eighty, ninety bucks, you know, so. So, um, and that's on a three hundred thousand dollar home, um, you know, if we go all the way out to five hundred thousand dollar homes, which is quite a few of those in this community. Um, that's a bigger saving, that's about, um, about two hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred dollars, uh, a year in insurance savings. Um, these are, again, not current numbers, not currently what they're charging. Probably, um, it's probably even greater savings now than, than when this, um, table was developed, but, go ahead.
Uh, I, I was just gonna ask, I, I sort of see the ISO rating as, you know, two issues, one, safety for safety sake. I just wanted to be prepared and be able to do what you guys do, but two, I mean, these insurance rates, and so to the second point. Are there any, are there any like cheap, quick ways to bump up the ISO ratings, like what's the easiest? What's the easiest score to pump up with the fewest dollars spent? Would it be the water access?
Probably training.
Training.
Right, cuz if I'm gonna invest in something that's gonna pay back very quickly, um, we'd be training personnel, right? So we need to hire people, we need to train them, when we start to train them and and get those training numbers up, that's where we're, if you look at our numbers, that's where we're really. Low in in our, in our numbers is training, and if I'm gonna invest in anything, it's gonna be people before equipment. Right, cuz if I don't have the people to put on the equipment, I could have the most beautiful fire trucks in the world, but they're not gonna go anywhere if I don't have the people. So.
Chief, what's our current number of people in the fire department?
Thirteen including myself.
So we went down a few in the last couple months, which is unfortunate.
It is, very unfortunate, it's not something that that I take lightly. Um, but I plan, we plan on recruiting, you know, and that's just. That is the ebb and flow of of the fire service right now, um, and it's a challenge to be a, a. Paid on call firefighter in today's, um, day and age, you know, who's got time for it, who wants to, who has a desire for it? That's a tough challenge that we have to meet, and we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to, to, um, meet that challenge.
Um, for the ISO score, um. Uh, well, so I think you mentioned you're gonna sort of break down your proposal, what, what you want, what you need, all that good stuff. It, it would be helpful to me, and I think the community in general, if you, and this might not be possible, to. Put some estimate on what it might do, like each individual proposal to our ISO score, so that we can do the math and say. All right, investing ten thousand dollars here is gonna save our citizens a hundred thousand dollars in homeowners insurance. And it'd be easier to present the, I mean, that's a direct cost savings to our citizens, I would. Yeah, I would think they would rather spend their money beefing up our fire department than paying more to their homeowners insurance. And so if we could pitch it as, you know, we're gonna lower your homeowners by two hundred bucks, but. Might cost you a hundred bucks extra in property taxes or something.
Absolutely, and I think that, um, through the budget process, I think we can, we can parcel that out, right? Um, you know, where do we wanna spend our money, what's gonna be the biggest bang for our buck? Um, what is that gonna cost each homeowner, um, those aren't numbers that I have in front of me tonight and prepared to talk about, because we haven't started that process, but absolutely. Um, we can do that, and the only caveat to that is, is the money we invest today in the department. ISO is gonna pay off for a number of years, so we're gonna be doing some investment. Um, but I, you know, we have to get ISO to then come back out and reevaluate us to, to make sure that we can get that score, but we wanna make sure that we're meeting all those. Those, um, benchmarks, so that when they do come out, we're, we're gonna be solid, so, yes.
Chief, how, on average, how often does ISO come out to rate the community?
Once every five to ten years, depending on, depending on where they're at, and because they're a busy organization, but we can request. In between, um, because we've made improvements, so.
Is it cost us money to have them come out and rate us?
Only, only our time, and it's a lot of time to do a ISO rating, so, but yeah, they don't charge us to, to rate us.
Are there like ISO consultants that cities can bring in to jack up their ISO ratings?
No, 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 that'd be a great business. Right, exactly. So, yeah, it's, um, you know, it's unfortunate.
This is great information, and as we go into our CIP process, uh, capital improvements. I, I like your concept, how do we sell this, and we can sell it by, if we invest this, here is the result. We can go back to the ISO.
Yeah, a hundred percent, and that's, so I wanna get in front of you before the, the budget process starts, because I think there's, there's some. Um, definitely some savings we can, we can, um, get within our budget, um, and some money that we can spend to, to invest. So. All right, questions, any other questions on the ISO improvement?
Are we, in my opinion, we skipped over the employee health and wellness, is that coming up in your slideshow?
I actually, um, let's see, I took, I don't know. Cuz I would like to, but, uh, we can talk about it, I thought I removed it because it was, uh. It was a topic that the firefighters were, they were concerned about. Um, we'll talk about that, we can definitely talk about health and wellness, so, sorry, all right, um, talk about. Yeah, thank you, so, um. Let's, uh, we'll continue on, I'll, I'll touch on health and wellness at the end here. Um. So they come out the role, so I wanna talk about PPE upgrade, um, coming to clients, and so, you know. We need to invest some money, and I kind of talked about that or touched that on, uh, under PPE. Um, whereas all of our firefighters need a, a, a fit set of gear. Um, not all of them have it today, um. We are going to hire firefighters, so we're gonna have to plan for, for more, turnout gear that needs to be bought. Um, I just wanna put that on your radar as, as. We're gonna be asking for turnout gear, we're gonna talk about turnout gear in the future, and that doesn't mean that everybody gets two sets, it means that everybody gets one fitted set. And, and we'll have sets to, um, to fit people into, so, okay, um. We wanna upgrade our train, uh, our training to include credential topics, and I wanna talk about flexible platforms. I talked to the fire department last night about flexible platforms, because again, I have to get the people that are here, they're buying on. Do they want this, what do they want, and what a flexible platform, um, looks like for us is an online training component. Firefighters were, um, uh, very receptive to, to having a work-life balance where. I don't have to pull them in, you know, three or four times a month to do training, if I can give them options that they can do training. Say at home on their own time, um, through a flexible platform, where they can fit it into their schedule, um, that would help them immensely, and so. Um, that increases our training time that we, um, that we can record for our firefighters, it increases our knowledge, but it gives them a flexibility. To do it when it's convenient for them, um, and trying to break away from this fifty year old model of. Well, we're a paid on call department, bring everybody in on Wednesday nights for this training and, and you're gonna be here or do or die and. You're gonna miss your kid's soccer or whatever that may be, um, I wanna give, uh, more flexible options. So, moving forward, we wanna give people opportunities to have credential training, get people onto, to different areas that they, that we need them in. Um, and we want to, um, uh, create or, uh, get into a platform where they have. Um, these flexible online options, so.
How does that affect, so currently, we're, we have a training budget of, uh, twenty thousand dollars, and if we, if, and we're obviously paying, paying time for. The firefighters to come, come to training on Wednesday nights, how does that offset, or does it offset if we cha-change their, our training model?
It doesn't necessarily offset the, the, the hours that they're, that we're gonna pay them for, because again, if somebody's gonna sit at home and, and do training. Just like people work from home, get paid, we would do the same thing, the offset comes when I don't have to bring in specialized.
That's what I'm trying to get at, what is, is there, is there, is there a net balance, is there a, a?
There could be, I'd have to, you know, again, um, I really wanna dig into the platform more and dig into what we can eliminate for as far as bringing in specialized instructors. Uh, but yes, there, there definitely is, or can be, an offset to that.
Cuz in theory, there's a, without having to, to hire specialists to come in, because those specialists are already built into the, theoretically built into the application.
Yep, absolutely, so there can be an offset for it, so, all right. Um, so incremental growth, uh, my plan. My plan would be to retain a part-time fire chief position until such time the department has grown, um, to sustain its own leadership, what does that look like? I can't tell you today, but I'll tell you, it's not, it's not June of this year, um, for sure, so, um. You know, if, if, if you wanna keep myself as a part-time fire chief, or you want to, to look for a different fire chief. Um, that's completely up to the council, but, but I think it would be, um. I think it'd be short sighted at the point that we're in with our department, to hire a full-time fire chief. Um, or go looking for a full-time fire chief to take on the problems that, that we're already solving as an apartment. Um, the members are, are, I've never seen such dedicated members to a department, um, absolutely. Wonderful firefighters, and they want to make this work, and so we're on a good trajectory, um. And, and retaining a part-time position for now saves us money. Um, where we can invest that into the firefighters, so that would be my plan. Um, we need to implement a commercial business fire safety inspection program, we don't have one today. And so what does that do for, for our city as from a liability standpoint? We are the authority having jurisdiction, we're the ones that are supposed to be inspecting these businesses on a annual, semi-annual basis. Um, if a business has a fire. We'll go and put up the fire out, but the first thing they're gonna do is they're gonna request records of when was the last time the building was inspected, and were there any violations? And our answer is, I don't know, we don't have any records for that, and so we need to fix that problem. And so we need to institute that, that inspection program, what does that look like? Um, I'm certified as an inspector, that's a part of the position that I can take on right now, until we can develop people within our department that can do that, so.
Chief.
Yes.
Um. Are there any? How far or how small of a bit commercial business? Wait, where do we start looking, and then, and then we have home, home-based businesses?
So, any, any business that's licensed by the city?
Licensed business.
Okay, so, anybody operating as a commercial business should be inspected. Home businesses are really, um, you know, the home office isn't really considered a business, right? But say somebody's doing, uh, daycare, that's a licensed business by the state, that should be inspected, um. Somebody is running a trucking company out of a big pole barn that they, you know, have a commercial business, that. Piece of that should be inspected, not the house, but the business itself, so. It's, you know, you know, it's a, a fine line here between what is a business, what's not. Um, but we really need to look at, uh, again, if they're, if they're ensuring their. Business through a commercial business going, it's a business, so, and that's. Um, that might be something that we're gonna have to parcel out, what that looks like.
I know, we, I mean, we, we license tobacco and cig, uh, tobacco and cigarettes, tobacco, cigarette, tobacco and, and liquor. Um, but we really don't license every, anything else, we have additional use permits for businesses. Um, and we have interim use business, interim use permits for businesses, so I mean, we can maybe look at that. And then, as you say, if it's a daycare, or something that is licensed by another.
A commercial kitchen.
A commercial kitchen, like we just approved, Mr. Brownies, Ms. Brownies.
That would be something we'd have to figure out, what, what are, you know, how do we define a business, what does that look like, what are we gonna inspect?
We could also just look at the map and say, we've got commercial industrial zone right there, and maybe that is our first round.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, just, yep, for sure.
Thank you.
Uh, and then we need to strengthen our, our public outreach, being education programs, and that's our recruitment pieces, right? So I know that we have, um, you know, churches and schools within our, our community. Um, we have several events that we do within our community that the fire department, um, needs to have a presence at, so that, you know, we can. We can interact with the community on a positive note, not when they're having their medical emergencies, or when they're having their fires. Um, and we can recruit from, from those events, so, um, we'll do that by, by, you know. Getting more people in the fire department, and getting the training to those types of things, so. Um. Also, uh, we're moving on, um. We need to rip, um, I, we need to look at replacing the rescue with a dual response vehicle. Um, that includes an ISO rated pump, and so you've got a handout in front of you that has a shiny red fire truck on it, that's, um. Kind of what we're, what we're looking at, um, trying to move to. Um, so right now, when I send the rescue out on a medical, it could be in the very northwest corner of town on a medical. If we get a fire or anything else, that crew either has to come all the way back and get a different truck, or we hopefully have responders at the station that can then bring another truck out. Difficult during the day right now, cuz we only have like three or four responders during the day, so we really wanna make sure that we put them in the right vehicle. To, to take care of the job, and so, um, we know this rescue was our, is, is a liability to us, we know it needs to get replaced. What I am recommending is that we replace it with something that has an ISO rated pump, it has water on it, it has. Rescue equipment, it has everything we need to do with it, but it's not. An all-out fire engine, it's smaller than a fire engine, bigger than a rescue, it's somewhere in between. Um, still carries four firefighters, still carries four hundred gallons of water, things, hoses, carries all. And so.
This would replace rescue one?
This would replace rescue one, so. Um and we're, you know, through the budget process, we can talk about bonding for that and what that looks like, but but that is, that would be the the. The replacement that I would recommend for um for rescue one. So.
What is the cost of it?
The cost of those vehicles about five hundred thousand dollars.
I was scared to ask.
I know. Um but but a so a straight up rescue vehicle with no no water, no pump on it, they're about three hundred thousand dollars, so. You know, do you get your biggest bang for your buck? Do you get that ISO rated pump, do you get the the pumping capacity, the reserve pumping capacity, because now we have another. Truck with a ISO rated pump on it and water and so that's what I'm looking is I'm trying to maximize. Um not only our response um for the vehicle, but you know, where can we get our biggest bang for our investment?
And what what is the lifespan that typically?
Typically, those are twenty years, fifteen to twenty years, depending on how how many calls we've won, again, our call volume's going up, so. Um but I would definitely uh put that out at fifteen to twenty years.
I really like the concept as you're tying in the ISO and saying, all right, hey, for us to lower it, twenty twenty six is what we can plan for twenty twenty seven. You said the other vehicle's in two thousand eight, so it's we're coming approaching that twenty year lifespan, twenty twenty eight might be that truck. So and then it allows time to budget and.
Right.
But if we're continually reducing or increasing the ISO, I don't know which one to lower. We wanna lower the insurance costs.
Right.
Well, you might have an exact balance of invest this lowers insurance costs, so it might be a complete offset, don't know what to do with that.
Right.
Uh but this could be really interesting.
Yeah, and it's different for it's different for homeowners versus businesses, cause businesses. Also, you know, get that benefit of the lower ISO, so it might be more for the businesses than it is necessarily for the homeowners.
Well, the homeowners paid the taxes here, so hopefully it's more for the homeowners.
Just saying that kinda goes all around, so. Okay. So my recommendation is um in the future, we're gonna look at installing three warning sirens instead of. Instead of uh four, five, sorry, five, cause two thousand four, they did a study um that we needed six in the community. Um my my recommendation is to do three more, which will bring us to four throughout the community. Kind of center goes around the the center of town because we have sirens on the outside outskirts of town. That can cover other communities that can cover us. Plus a combination with the Oak County Communication Center that uses cellular. Um devices to map that out too, so technology has changed since the last study. Um and I think we need to balance both, so. But again, that's that is probably. Future future down the road, um all federal funding has dried up um for.
There's no grants left.
No, there's no grants, there's no federal funding for emergency management, there's no federal funding for AFG, which is assistance to firefighter grants. No safer grants, we can't hire personnel, um there's nothing, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to look at long range planning for.
General cost for a siren.
It's been, uh they're right around um thirty to sixty thousand dollars depending on how you power them. Right, so we're gonna drop a power line, it's about thirty thousand dollars um plus the meter um and the power source. Um if you go to a battery operated solar, they're about sixty thousand dollars, but the nice thing about those is they're standalone, so you just. Need a square plot of land, plop it in there, if you've done, you don't have to run power to it and have have.
But it's twice, almost twice the cost.
It is twice the cost, yeah, and by the time we get around to actually putting these in, hopefully slower, but um. But yeah, they are not cheap to put in, so.
Say that again, man?
And grants are better.
Yeah, grants are great.
If we have them, I would.
Apparently, we're like three years off on this phase.
I just spoke to, yeah, I just spoke to to Anoka County and and their scram one. Because there's no grant money out there whatsoever, they just got word that everything's cut off, so.
And it's one of them things is it's not needed until it's needed, when it's needed, and if there is a tornado that comes through here, you have one siren. And we have a loss of residents because we didn't have sirens, it'd be shame on us for not action, even with that cost.
Yep.
That's that balance that we gotta be able to talk about is risk versus reward, and I don't wanna say reward that way, but we have a risk. In this case, you're calling a liability and.
Definitely reduce the liability, you know, having them, so. And then we've identified the the sites for potential water sources and and hopefully um we can move forward in the future with those. So I I'm gonna step back and uh talk about the the health and wellness side.
Wait, I did have a question about water sources?
Yeah.
And you might not know this, but it, so it sounds like a dry well, isn't that expensive? If a homeowner decided they wanna put in a dry well and they had like pond or something, would that? Would that even further affect or decrease their homeowner's insurance rates by being a water source for the fire department?
I don't believe that unless they are on a lake, like live on a lake, they wouldn't have enough water in a pond, so we have these, we have ponds and things like that that are out there. Um there's not enough water in there to count towards a water source, so it has to be so many acres. Um the depth has to be so deep, um and so you have to have a a pretty, pretty. Um healthy water source to do that, so.
Also.
And they they'd actually have to then dedicate to, they'd have to dedicate a landing pad for the fire department and you know what I mean, an easement for it, so you can use it. That kind of thing, so unfortunately, no, they'd probably be, they'd probably be better off just putting sprinklers in the house. Um run off of a well, so. All right, so I just wanna talk about the health and wellness and recruitment, and I apologize for some of this slide that um wasn't in my my slide deck. When the firefighters, we talked a little bit about it, but um we do need a a a health and wellness program within the the city. Um right now, um you know, firefighting is one of the most dangerous jobs that that um any one of our city employees can do. Um and we have no um health and wellness program for them to maintain their their physical fitness, maintain their cardio. Um leading cause of of death in firefighters is cardiac. Um and so not having facilities for them to to um work out. Um is actually um is a detriment and a liability to us. Um and so, you know, getting equipment for them to do that or providing. Memberships for them to do that and time to do that, you know, and encouraging things like that. Um I think there's a bunch of different things that we can do to look at, how do we um provide um. Health and and wellness for our firefighters. Our current facilities don't really accommodate any of that, there's really no place to put equipment. Um and um talking about our. Our recruitment, our current um program is falling short of providing those adequate um candidates for retention. We look at um our current housing stock doesn't really generate firefighters, so we're gonna have to look at where do we get our firefighters in the future. Right, um and I'm not gonna have a land. Land use discussion with with the council, that's that's for you guys to discuss, but. Where do you want us to pull firefighters from and how do we do it, right, and so what does that look like, future for the community? So um is that a land use issue, is that um you know, capitalizing on on. You know, surrounding populations to the to the city. I don't know at this point, but I think it's a it it's a should be a jumping off point to to start having. Bigger discussions on when we're planning out the city, what does this look like for future for the fire department, how do we get employees from from the community?
And it's gonna get worse, not better.
It it is, yeah, and we're trying, we're gonna we're gonna move forward with it.
But chief, um. I was trying to think of as far as re recruitment and what businesses do we currently have? That employee. Where their employees are on site during the day, a lot of ours are, they come in, they get a telephone, they leave, and they come back at five o'clock. We could think about what businesses do we have that employ on site? That maybe would help us through the daytime hours.
If if they would allow their employees to.
And 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 they would have to, yeah.
If those employees um. Would be willing to.
Really.
Train, um yeah, I mean, there are definitely recruitment options for that.
Yeah.
Um you know, not say that it's not possible, I'm just not confident that we probably have the businesses to do.
May only get to get you two people, but you know, I just was thinking, when you're talking recruitment, how do we start to think outside the box and?
Yeah, I'll I'll be honest with you, you know, since I've been here and since the spring has started and we've opened up the doors to the fire station and had. You know, our trucks out and stuff like that, we've had more and more people come up to the fire station and they see us out there, which is, um you know, it's awesome, it's amazing. Um a lot of people don't know that, you know, we have a fire department here, a lot of people don't know it's a paid on call that they can join, so. You know, our recruitment effort is gonna be really to get out of the community and so. Our recruitment plan is is to um recruit in the fall around the. Heritage Festival, am I saying that right, um around the Heritage Festival and and really um kind of hit the community at that time. Um it doesn't really do us any good to recruit here in the spring and in the summer because. People are getting into their busy months of vacation, everything else, so I think uh I think when we get to the fall, um our plan is to recruit hard. Um if we can get people in the door, the first class we're sending them to is the medical class, so they get that out of the way first. Um tends to be the hardest course that we have, um and it's it's probably the most grueling as far as mentally and so. I plan to do that in the winter time rather than send them in the the spring or summer to that, much better plan, so.
Yes, how is a, how do we pay compared to surrounding towns like Ramsey's on call, paid on call, right? And other surrounding cities that are also paid on call?
We're definitely low and and I don't wanna compare us to other communities because it really, it's irrelevant to to where we're at. Um we definitely need to come up, right now, we're we're starting to pay for a firefighter sixteen dollars an hour, um and and. We're in now that, we're we're, you know, the rural community and so to get people to come out for sixteen dollars an hour. For a part time job that seems to be fairly dangerous and and happens to be really odd hours. Isn't really a great recruitment tool, um especially when, you know, business around us, um part time and and employment around. You know, it's twenty dollars an hour for starting in in some businesses and so um we probably need to look at what does that look like? For recruitment and and how do we retain people if if we're only paying, you know, sixteen to eighteen dollars an hour. It's probably not enough to really retain people and and the pension's there, obviously, but you you gotta make ten years for that pension to be anything. And so that's a pretty healthy commitment for sixteen dollars an hour, you either have to really love what you're doing. Um or, you know, are you just really trying to get to that ten years?
Do so, do departments ever offer to pay it on call, part time folks, health insurance through the city, that seems like it could drop. Young, young folks in that.
Yeah, um it's expensive, I don't know of departments that do that. Uh most young folks that are coming in, um most of our firefighters who are young are still covered in their. Kind of self plan, um so a lot of them, um it's it's irrelevant to them. Um I I think the I think the wage is probably the biggest thing that that would be a driving factor to get people like. Hey, we want you to do this much command, we want you to get excited about this, but we're only paying sixteen dollars an hour. And there's not really a big incentive for that, and so. You know, I I've always joked with with my wife when she's like, oh, you're gonna get a part time job, I'm like, yeah, but I don't get out of bed for less than twenty five dollars an hour, right? It's not what I'm at, saying that we should pay people, but but you know, when you look around at other communities, um in other part time employment. Sixteen dollars an hour is pretty low.
Any knowledge of what safe places to Oak Grove is at?
I I don't, um and again, I don't wanna compare us to other cities when you look at that because. You know, that's a community of what, ten thousand people or something, nine thousand people? Um St. Francis is nine thousand.
They're quite the size of you.
Right, um Ramsey, twenty seven thousand people, we've got forty five hundred, forty six hundred people in this town, so it's a difference of. Of population, it's just who can we draw from and if, so if we're gonna try and draw from the the community, we probably have to give them an incentive to come out. Right, um civic civic minded people are are kind of a thing of the past, I have, I have six kids. Only one of them is in the nine one one service and she's a dispatcher. None of them have gone into firefighting, so you think if anybody's gonna go into firefighting, it's gonna be one of my kids, cause they've seen it for thirty seven years. And uh and not one of them passed, so um it's a challenge, um but we're, you know, the department's committed to recruiting. I'm committed to recruiting, we're gonna do everything we possibly can. To recruit people for this department, we're gonna make it exciting to be here and for people to want to be here.
Have you guys considered putting out those calendars that some of those bigger cities put out?
We all, we talked about that last night, we all decided we only have one firefighter who'd go on to that calendar.
Oh, yeah.
So that would be one guy. Yeah, we've done that before, so. Absolutely.
Um I I did have a real question, um uh back to the employee health and wellness, I guess, I I was curious, um if you know. Like, how often are there were complaints from the firefighters, were either, has there ever been a cancer one or a cardiac? And then just like the straight injuries.
So we had um um Chad Hift, right, Chad? Oh, I'm sorry, Bart, yeah, I'm sorry, not Chad Hift. Apologize, um yeah, Bart, um actually, our engine fifty, that was his badge number. And he passed away of of cancer, so we've had that here.
I I think it, is he, was that part of Ramsey when we saw?
When we're, yeah, when we're with Ramsey.
Was that like five years ago or something?
And I apologize, uh just cause I don't know that history, but I do know that. That question, why is the engine named fifty, they're like, this is why, I'm like, okay, well, I understand and and. You know, it's completely respectful, but yeah, we we've had that. And so, you know, we just had um Minfire out here and I think it was February talking about cancer awareness and. Um that was one of our trainings and so, you know, we're really, we're really trying to be aware of that. Um and it it is, we are leaps and bounds ahead of when I started in the fire service. When it comes to cancer awareness and and, you know, washing or turn up there and making sure that everything is clean. You know, when I started in the fire service, we never washed our turn up there, it was, if it wasn't dirty, you weren't doing your job. And so, you know, that's a huge change um within the within the fire services, so, so.
And I agree with you, chief, my my father was in Minneapolis Fire Department, employee, he died at age forty in nineteen sixty nine of lung cancer.
Yeah, absolutely.
We are leaps and bounds, I think of, you know, fires, when you talk about the commercial. We had a a fire in Minneapolis where they went in and went down to the basement, they didn't know they were doing auto repair.
Right.
And all the chemicals and we lost a few of them, the old Dutch fire, 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 the old Dutch plant, the fire. We lost probably three firefighters there, because we didn't have that information.
Right, absolutely, and that's why, and that's why I'm here, you know, at this time. To talk about, we need to start planning for the future, you know, we look at that fire station, that fire station. Um it's got a lot of of uh, you know, safety issues with it, ventilation is probably one of the biggest things, you know, having those trucks in there. Not having a ventilation system for them um is not good for our firefighters, it's not good for for the, you know, for our personal. And around that stuff all the time, so, um but, you know, you've identified it. You know, and we're gonna plan to to move forward at some point um to to uh improve that, so.
And chief, the the health and wellness um. For physical and mental health, I think we as a council should consider um incorporating our our every part. Other employee and non firefighter employees in that, cause that's important.
Yeah, I think I think all city employees should be should be looked at um as a whole when it comes to to health and wellness and physical fitness and all of that. Um because, you know, you know, we have, um you know, we have employees that are doing physical jobs, we have employees that are doing, you know. That are doing more office work that really need um health and wellness too, and so, you know, it's kind of across the board, so.
Chief.
Yeah.
So it has a mental health on here, is there certain requirements that the fire department has to do the mental health, like when they come across the. Accident where somebody has passed away like the tractor?
Yeah, so there isn't a, there isn't a, you know, we have to have a mental health program, we 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 do through Minfire. Um so, so if we have a traumatic event, things like that, we have resources that we can reach out to. Um and and bring specials in, um and that's that's been funded by the state, by the state primary hospital office that that helps fund that. Um and so we do have some resources out there. What we should actually probably be looking at, um do we have a health and wellness, mental health for for our employees, like any people in the inner program? Um uh where if if employees are struggling for any reason, they have a resource that they can reach out, and that's usually through our workers' comp. That can help provide that, um I just don't, I don't know that we have that in the city, um that I know of, but. Um but definitely, we we um we need to invest in to make sure that um our people are. Um, but definitely we we um, we need to invest in to make sure that um our people are. Are mentally prepared for for what they're gonna um have to respond to.
So I'm in the process right now of renewing work comp, so I can check with them. And to see what that cost of an add-on potentially would be, I was just thinking, I have never paid a bill for mental health, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, absolutely, and it's a, it's a thing that's that's um become prevalent probably in the last. Five to seven years um in all um aspects of of city employment. And so, um, you know, having an employee assistance program and having mental health um for employees is is. You know, it's it's very important, so. All right. All right, finally, we're just gonna talk while moving forward. Want to go back to the, so he is, um, don't get lost in all this. We need equipment. We need apparatus. We're gonna work on the ASO water supply. We need training and certification. Um, we gotta start doing fire code safety inspections. And we need to work on recruitment and attention, those are the big things that we need to work on, what does that look like moving forward? Where I think we need to sit down and discuss that um through the budgeting cycle come end June. Um, and how we can um save money, um, spend money. Um, and how does that impact the citizens? So with that, I will stand for any questions that you need.
He probably got a quick question, so it's really um going back to this, as we take our CIP and roll it in there, but. I see a bridge needed here in the bridges and say, these are the needs, we'll break them down and by year, here's the costs. Cause everything you're asking for right there has a cost.
Absolutely.
Um, so it's gonna be important for us to understand, so when we go into our capital investment piece, prior to budgeting, we've got a full understanding, we can nest it in there in the necessary. Lanes and then with that, it makes you coming back on what we what we can do for homeowners, and if we can reduce insurance, that's a fantastic sell.
Right, absolutely, if we can, if we can reduce insurance to invest in the department, um, I think it's a, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Absolutely.
So, um, and and we would definitely will come back through the budgeting process, um, so that you can understand. Where we wanna spend the money, where we can save the money and what makes sense for for people who are investing in this community.
Do you have any questions, Sir Chief?
Yeah, chief, um, now that you've been on the job for just for about a quarter, um, and knowing that. We we were, last year we were able to uh. Not spend our entire budget and that we've added, added about forty thousand dollars in the twenty-five budget, have you had a chance to take a look at the budget and go and? Well, if we kind of did some adjusting here, this year now, we theoretically could um make some, implement some of these changes.
Um, I haven't had a real chance to to dive into what we're saving versus what we're spending because I just had to replace eighteen. Eighteen tires on fire apparatus that um wasn't budgeted for and wasn't expected, but was a safety issue. Um, so that's definitely something that I can come back with.
You know, because, yeah, I think that would be good because obviously, you know, we we talk about little wins, there might be some little wins that we can get now that we.
Absolutely, if there's if there's savings in the budget, um, that we can to today, that we can um implement for a win. Definitely we will do that.
Which is new rescue one, so when we um. Got the last one, we bought all kinds of new tools and different things for it, is there any carryover of what we currently have? I mean, individual tools, I would think, is there anything else that's could carry over to go into a new vehicle?
So everything that's on rescue one go on to the new one, um, yeah, so it it wouldn't be like we'd have to buy a whole bunch of tools to stock this one. Because that truck would go away, and we would just move tools over and over.
Thank you.
You made the comment that obviously we're not ready to go out on our own in six months, your contract is opening June. Um, what is your appetite for extending your contract?
So I have, um, after after speaking to my family and 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 talking to the department, because the department. Um, again. I don't wanna be somewhere where where, you know, people don't want me or or I'm not doing a good job. Um, so talking to the department last night, speaking with my family, um, I have an appetite for extending the contract, I. Like I am so dedicated to these firefighters that are here, I wanna make sure that I see them succeed. Um, they've been through a lot, um, they're dedicated. Um, and I wanna make sure that I'm here to give them the best opportunity to move forward, and so. Um, if that looks like a two-year extension on the contract to get this done, I'm willing to put the time in. Um, with the city will have me, so.
We need to put it on the agenda. I don't know if that means the end of April or beginning of May, so we can talk about it as a council. Um, so it's one of the pieces I was gonna bring up tonight.
Be specific, the chief and I will not be here for the April twenty-fourth meeting.
Then we won't do it April twenty-fourth. Then it'll be May. Um, we just need to have a plan before his contract runs out, so we can discuss this, that's all I was suggesting, not specifically what day.
I've done so good with my coffee and now today it started again. Um, I I don't have any questions, but I thank you for your presentation. I mean, Dan, I, to me, this is the most we've had, and and not to be disrespectful to anybody else, but this has. Been more information than we've had, and so I truly appreciate it, and I think with this information and um. Some good conversations, um, I think we can see ourselves moving forward with um not everything, but.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, prioritize and um. So I think we all are committed to having a good fire fire department, and in order to have a good fire department, you need to support it with. The firefighters and the that they need to perform their duties.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
But maybe just some feedback for you also is, uh, I did talk to uh one firefighter today and he just. Echoed how. You've come in and done a great job and provided the leadership, and that's one of the key things that uh. I wasn't here for the hiring process, but that I personally appreciate is when the firefighters follow me and say, hey, you're. Chief's good stuff, we really appreciate him, so just so you know, that's some feedback.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Um, so that's great information, um, and then I personally just wanna tell you thank you for coming and doing, cuz this is taking time from your family, and I know you get paid. But thank you for taking this, um, cuz it's probably uh, um, probably very much like us, it's a little bit of a thankless job. So, um, so thank you for doing it.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah. Can we talk quickly about the calendar for in two weeks?
Check, so what it, when when is the next time we're back here, let's add that to the agenda for next time. For April twenty-fourth.
Yeah, the twenty-third for the CIP with Lori.
So what I would do is like we adjourn this and we can talk dates on the next time we come, we'll put it on the agenda, we talk specifically.
The the date, the the date in question is actually the twenty-fourth, at a at a March meeting, we actually talked about. Not scheduling something for that night because council member Brian has a critical uh budgetary meeting.
Okay, we also had to fit in other things, so that was the, so we looked at the counters and there's nothing else, we can't fit anymore in. Um, because this was our, we had talked about not doing multiple council meetings past April.
So the the me- the meeting on the twenty-fourth, is that just to review the personnel policy and um. Ordinances from the attorney or or are decisions gonna be made at that meeting?
Um, it was to review the policy with the attorney, if I remember right.
Yeah, it was to review what council's thoughts were, what they wanted to add to, there were six or seven items, I believe, that needed to be addressed. That needed a council decision on. Yeah, that's what he was, the intent was is to have it all done so that you could bring it back, but we could probably schedule another one, but. You'll have to decide if you want the attorneys to come back a second time.
No, I don't wanna pay for them to come back same time. No, but if the goal is to try to get everybody on board, so that there's no doubt about it, and we would like that everybody would attend. And the twenty-fourth would be too late to come back and or the twenty-third would be too late to come back and discuss that, I do agree with that. So what we could, but we've already got them planned, the attorneys are currently planned for the twenty-fourth?
They are, along with Rum River Consultants regarding separate compliance.
So could we ask this, we we don't have to have every council member present, could we take? The information, is there, is it something you could watch the video on and provide information back later on? So I, these are questions, I don't know the answer, but maybe we could provide that an option for council member Brian, so we can move forward with the meeting, but at the same time, still get, make sure we get your feedback.
The question would be, what would, what is the expectation of the council last night, are we, are 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 we revise, re, is the potential there that we're revising? Or changing the policy, or are we specifically just looking at the attorney's recommendations?
So there's a six points that would be discussed that night, is my understanding of it. Six points that we came in and they said, hey, this is where we need to get feedback and input from everybody. So what do you have going on the twenty-fourth, sir?
We have the the Noka County Fire Protection Council meeting, for private protection meeting.
That's all.
And then, and we're talking about the budget, exactly, so.
Can we do this, could we bring back some options and see what else we could do then?
Yeah, I can try to reschedule.
Could try to reschedule so everybody could be here. I don't know if we could bump it up to next week, is that possible?
I'm I'm gone and I, the city's learned about that for over a month.
So what what we had said is, you said you didn't want multiple meetings, um, so it's trying to fit them in in the April schedule, going, that was the intent. I know we have one on May first. And then we're back on May seventh or May eighth for the open forum. Can you just send out an email and go ahead?
What is May first?
What is May first?
Have to pay them, pay my U-Care that day, but other than that.
May first, what I have on my calendar is a city council meeting for CIP.
That's because this department had to say put numbers together after, because we're doing CIP on the twenty-third. And then it's department had to come together and tell Lori what they think they need based upon what council says we need. And put it all together, so you should be invited to that.
I'll be in the city office.
That's not a council.
I I just put on my calendar, yeah.
Right, so that's.
Just so I knew it better, maybe it's not termed correctly. Okay, so we put together some recommendations and throw some dates out and. We're gonna have to make it this, we have to make a lot of decisions together, but I don't think we have to, for the dates, it's, can we make it work? Or should we go open our calendars right now and see what else is up, what is the best thing to do?
I think that's easier than asking staff with.
So everybody, please pull out your calendar, I don't think we have any more questions, fix it, I did.
In the, in the past, um, when it came to purchasing, I know that it was. Um, that there's been opportunities like, um, talking to um Oak Grove or St. Francis, hey, are you guys buying turnout gear? And is is there any any uh savings on scale for some, for things like that? And I I know there's also, there's different brands in turnout gear, I don't know, I mean, at one time, I know we were, I thought we were sharing with Oak Grove, but that. Using the same brand, but that may or may not have changed, I don't know.
Yeah, currently, currently, the way that they do trunkers is kind of consortium pricing anyways right now, so there isn't any savings in in going with. Um, you know, multiple departments or anything like that, because they're all getting consortium pricing, so.
Chief, I think that I believe that concludes our questions, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, all the information, all right, if everybody would open their calendars. Um, so you, the twenty-fourth does not work. Would the twenty-ninth work? It could be the twenty-eight, twenty-ninth or thirty, does that work for anybody?
Thirty is LGO.
Is is a what?
Government official meeting.
Okay.
That's a fifth Thursday. I have the first available.
Apparently, I don't anymore, so.
Is that at that night?
No, okay, what what time is that at? Right at noon, okay, so maybe we're open that night, there you go, does that work?
The twenty-ninth?
Uh, May first, it'd be Thursday, May first. I have it open.
I'm open.
First.
Uh, I'm gonna be a single parent on first, I could.
Well, we do have a fire department.
I could make a first work.
Okay, so the recommendation is to move the twenty-fourth to the first, does that work for everybody?
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like, like, two more dates, please, so, because there were. Um, the attorneys also have other city mi- meetings that they go to and and Rum River Consultants, so if I could get. Man, our first choice, second choice, third choice, so that I can.
So May first would be first choice, can we go to like May sixth?
Twenty-ninth.
Yeah, I I would be fine with twenty-nine, April.
I'm good, twenty-nine.
So do four twenty-nine first, then, because you have a conflict on the.
Yeah, I can make the first work, but four twenty-nine is better for me.
All right, we gotta wait for council member.
For some reason, I showed that the fire department is using the town hall on that night.
That was supposed to be this meeting.
Oh, okay, then I'm good.
So twenty-nine, twenty-eighth would be first choice, everybody good with that? And then the second choice would be May first, do we need a third choice?
I would guess most people, but probably the fifth.
May eight, we're gonna be here for the open forum, so we already have everybody here. May sixth? May seventh? Would May seventh work for a third option? Yes, works, works, that's right, right? Okay, so that would be the third option, it's May seventh.
So can we switch the first for the seventh?
Twenty-ninth, seventh and first would be the order.
Twenty-nine, seven first, okay. Adjourn the meeting.